Yes. Yes.
All right, and I'm gonna begin by asking you all to join me in prayer. This is a prayer for our country from the Book of Common Prayer. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industries, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. And do you with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government? That they may be, there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law, we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail. All which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Now please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic, which is one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Welcome everyone who's joining or listening in through Zoom. We appreciate everyone's patience as we continue to utilize this meeting format to encourage safety and good health among our staff and our commission. We continue to watch and monitor our hospitalizations and for frank fortune low at this time. So if keeping that in mind, we want to continue social distancing, washing our hands and wearing masks. And with that, I'll call the committee to order a submitting which has been duly posted. And a regular meeting of the City Commission. And we'll go next to citizen communication and input. Amanda, do we have anybody?
We don't have no one today, Mayor.
All right, no one has signed up, so we'll then go on to item one, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 19th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Anybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both likes and a motion carries. And next we have the consent agenda items. Two A through H.
Mayor, can we take two C out? Because there were, we had talked about making some possible changes that we can discuss it separately.
Yeah, correct.
With that, with that being said, I'll make the motion to A through B and then D through. I'm looking over here, H.
Yeah.
Motion to approve those.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Delarosa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Items two A and B and D through H. The consent agenda are approved. So two C, which is the second and final reading to approve, and adopting ordinance for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in the general retail district located at thirty-eight eleven West Business. Three bearing a legal description of one point nine two two acres on block sixteen to replace subdivision survey four two slash two nine seven. I think we had asked the staff to do some follow-up or research on this.
My reaction was security personnel and what is the actual occupancy rate?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. The occupancy levels is three hundred and fifty people. So that's from the chief building official. We added a condition to the ordinance to that effect that they can never exceed the three hundred and fifty people as for the occupancy levels. So that's an additional condition to the ordinance. And also, we checked with the applicant, and he had no objections to requiring two licensed security officers during peak hours. So based on that, we changed the ordinance to reflect that two officers will be required during peak times at all times. The applicant had no problems with that.
That's fine.
Yeah, having said that, I'd like to motion for an approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Both likes and motion carries. Item three is a consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen, Texas, to approve and sign the memorandum of understanding between Texas South Coast College Criminal Justice Institute and the City of Harlingen, Texas Police Department to seek partnership by collaborating to provide quality training for peace officers, both active peace officers and those suspected to be peace officers. Chief or
Mayor Chief Anderson will present this item.
Hello. Yes, we're requesting authorization to sign this MOU. We have come into partnership with with Brownsville Police Academy. We had a need at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, and we had to train a couple of police officers. They were already set up with a virtual academy. Several other pluses with their academy is that their training cycle is in line with our hiring cycle. I'm prepared to answer any questions in reference to this.
The staff is recommending approval, Chief.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign that motion carries. Item four is consideration of possible action to approve or issue adopting TCAP's professional services agreement with Jexa Energy's commercial electric service agreement for power to be provided on or after January first, twenty twenty-three. Gabe?
Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner.
Motion to take this item off the table.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. This item was tabled from the last meeting. City Commission had a few questions, so during that time, TCAP staff prepared a PowerPoint presentation that we're gonna go over this afternoon. One of the things that we're gonna talk about first is what TCAP does, who they are, and what they can do for a city. And I'd like to point out that if we decide to go with a strategic hedging pricing, then we just have to adopt these items, but if we decide to go with a fixed pricing, TCAP will have additional documents that we'll bring back to the Commission in the spring, and we'll know the exact pricing, so we'll have to adopt that contract then. So with that, Bill Starnes and Margaret are on the line, and they're gonna go over the PowerPoint presentation here.
Mayor, City Commissioners, thank you so much for letting us have this opportunity to come back to you all and really kind of give you some more information and answer any of your questions. Real quickly, I just want to talk to you about, you know, who we are, what we do, how we're a little different than what else is out there in the market. First of all, we are a nonprofit organization. We are not looking to make money off of the city. In the past, we have given money back when we have, you know, additional funds, just in the, again, because we're a nonprofit. We have a hundred and sixty-six members throughout the ERCOT area. Eighty-eight of them are in the North Zone, fifty-four members are in the South Zone, and then we have some members in, you know, the West Zone and then the Houston area. By taking all hundred and sixty-six members, we're going out into the market with one point one billion kilowatts for procurement. Because we're going out into the market with so much energy, the energy providers really want our business. What makes us different is that we go into the wholesale market. We are talking to the power generators. We are getting our contracts in the wholesale market. We are not going through a retail electric provider like you all have to do at your homes. And because we're able to do that, we're also able to save some additional costs when getting a energy contract. We have a fifteen-member board. Got a little ahead, but we have a fifteen-member board that is made up of our elected from our membership. Just to let you all know that the City of Harlingen has been represented on our board through, from back in twenty-eleven through twenty-sixteen. The City of Harlingen was a founding member of the organization, which was our predecessor, the South Texas Aggregation Project, going back to two thousand and one. Just to give you what's going on right now in our membership, since I gave these slides to Gabriel, we actually have a hundred and forty-seven members have joined on the strategic hedging program. We have four members right now that have opted for a fixed price contract. We'll be coming back to them with all new paperwork that only talks about a fixed price contract in the spring. We have four members out of that eighteen that are on the agendas this month to talk to their councils and boards about SHP. And then we have had three members that have left. They've already told us that they're pursuing other offers and leaving TCAP in twenty twenty-three. Next slide. So again, like we'd said, our current contract that you all are under is right now a five-year fixed contract. It ends at the end of December of twenty twenty-two. We have developed this new procurement option. And the reason we did this is it's to eliminate the timing in the market to get the best price, and again, trying to find additional ways to save our members' money. But like I'd said, the traditional fixed price contract is still an option. Like I said, we have four of our members that have already told us this is what we want. We're good with that. I'm actually gonna turn it over to Bill Starnes. He is our energy consultant, and he's gonna explain to you why we're even talking about SHP and why we think that this is a good alternative to a fixed price contract. So next slide.
This is Bill Starnes. The first slide I'm gonna show you, we talked a little bit when we talked a couple of weeks ago about the future of oil and gas in this country, and this is just some slides from the Department of Energy showing the estimated production out to twenty fifty of oil in the orange line and the line is natural gas. And on the right-hand side is projected prices going out. What you see is we have really positive supply outlook, a lot of positive prices. And because of that, we think that pricing in the market should stay fairly good, too. And if you go to the next slide, that's their forecast of energy prices. And this is a nationwide average price, so you'll see the blue portion is the generation portion of energy prices. And that's the part that TCAP occurs for you. That's the energy. And you'll see it's going down from their estimate five point eight cents down to four point eight cents. They're drifting down. And of course, our prices in ERCOT in Texas are much lower than this already. This is a national average and there's a lot of high pricing there. We also see
Bill, I apologize for interrupting. I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I can hardly hear you.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, he sounds muted.
Officer, is this getting better?
Oh, there, that's a lot better. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had my volume on about halfway. I thought that would be the right number. Obviously not. I apologize for that. So the energy portion, again, of your energy, of your electric rates is the blue portion of the bars. That's, this is a national average price. ERCOT's much cheaper. We think ERCOT will stay cheaper because we have a lot of new plant generation in this state, and batteries will be coming on. Next slide, please. Well, SHP is not a radical departure from what you're doing today. It's still gonna be going out and buying for future periods. It's just that we're only gonna buy one year at a time, two years ahead. So in two thousand twenty-one, we'll be buying your energy that you will use in two thousand twenty-three. Two thousand twenty-two, your energy for two thousand twenty-four. And they're not gonna go out and buy it all at once. We're gonna buy increments over the course of the year. This is to try to increase the simple average price in the market. Guess when the right time to buy is. This graph is showing you over the years what the range of pricing is in the ERCOT market for energy. You can see some years like two thousand eleven, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we have a wide range of pricing, and it's kind of tough sometimes to pick, you know, are we seeing pricing going up for good, or is it gonna stay low? Other years are much more stable. But if you look at the red bars, that's the simple average price for that year, and you can see it's fairly consistent. Even in very volatile years, the average price stays pretty low. And that's what SHP is trying to do, is to capture that average price and avoid a lot of market volatility and trying to guess when the right time to buy is. Next slide, please. So I mentioned we're buying two years ahead, like in two thousand twenty-one, we're only gonna buy for two thousand twenty-three. That's because with the way the market is today, Margaret mentioned this last time, and this may be visually easier to see. You, the farther you go out in time, the more you tend to pay for energy. So in the short-term range, like for next year, prices tend to be a little higher because there's some market volatility and market uncertainty created with problems in the current market that they think will get fixed in the next year or two. So you see the price dip down. Like this is, these are prices from October, and you see twenty twenty-three is actually fairly low. But as you look out in time, it starts to increase. Couple of reasons for this is that there's a lot of carrying cost reflected in trying to buy energy so far forward. A lot of times, the fuel costs get higher. If you look at the cost of natural gas and things, they get higher, and there's risk premiums put in that sellers put in because if they look farther out into the future, if they sell you a fixed price far in the future, they're taking away their opportunity to sell that energy for what could be a better price if the market goes up. So they build some of those risk premiums in. So next slide, please. So if you look at a five-year contract from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, you actually would be buying a series of pricing, of prices that go up over time. And those risk premiums I talked about associated with trying to buy that block there that is circled in the red for a five-year contract could be about sixty-two thousand dollars a year for a fixed price contract as opposed to SHP, which tends to focus on those lower sections two to three years out and buying that period. So that's the only real difference that you see in SHP. And because it's really just trying to buy one small increment at a time instead of buying five years all at once, it doesn't take away your option if you see the market changing, that you can take the rest of that five years and go ahead and lock it out and convert it to a fixed price contract at any point in time you want to do it. And we have two off-ramp provisions in the SHP program in June and December, which we would be going to our members and saying, here's what we think the price will be, and if you want to get out, you can get out, and we'll convert you to a fixed price. Next slide, please. So just quickly, some mechanics on the program. It's a very competitive RFP-type process. We have a pool of over twenty wholesale suppliers, all very creditworthy. We'll be getting a minimum of four bids in each monthly procurement, maybe more, but at least a minimum of four. We're gonna have these multiple RFPs or procurements every year to try to mitigate that price risk and get to that average price that we're talking about and avoid that, you know, all-in guess of trying to say, okay, this is the right time to buy. This will be the best price you see in the next five years, and none of us can know that, of course. It's, it fits members' needs in that it's timely. By buying two years ahead, we'll be able to tell you your prices for the next year prior to your budgeting for that year. It's very flexible. I mentioned the off-ramps that you can convert to a fixed price at any time you want. It's extremely market competitive. You never should be too far out of the market and having to explain to your citizens why you have this long-term contract that's now out of the market. It looked like a good deal at the time, but now it's not. And we're planning on it being renewable and using REX or renewable energy credits to make the contract a hundred percent renewable. But that is optional. If you, if you see the bullet point at the bottom, it adds about a tenth of a cent to your price, and if you didn't want to do that, we can take that out and remove that tenth of a cent adder. We've actually had one member that has stated to us they want to do that. The rest of all decided to take it. So next slide, please. So when looking at this, you know, you may say, does this really work at all? Well, the best thing that we could come up with to look for an example of does it work is we went back and we looked at bid prices that were available to us and said, when we did this contract you're currently under at the three point eight eight cents that you currently are at, what if we had been doing SHP instead? And we went back and pulled bid prices that we had in our files and looked at, okay, if we had a program that bought them, what would our prices have been year by year? And that's what you see on the red bars. Those would be the prices that you see. The estimated savings for each of those years based on those prices for Harlingen is shown below at forty-six K, eighty-two K, sixty-four K, forty-three, and seventy-one. Looking forward, we think pricing in the future is gonna be lower than even what you see here. And that's why we have the estimated annual savings under the future contract. If I was to try to look at bid prices in the market today and estimate what I think the prices will be from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, I'm thinking about somewhere between eighty-seven and a hundred and fifty thousand a year. If you wanted to go with a fixed price contract, you can see below that I wrote that a fixed price would be slightly higher in price than SHP based on our analysis, and your savings as compared to your current contract would be about sixty-two to a hundred and twenty-three thousand a year. And the range is there because, you know, we don't know exactly where prices are gonna go. I don't know if you want to include or exclude those renewable energy credits we talked about, so I kind of created a range of some different options of what you may or may not want. That's why you see the range there. Next slide, please. This is strictly showing you the mechanics I've already talked about. In twenty twenty-one, we would start monthly purchases for SHP for twenty twenty-three in January. That's why we're here today to talk to you. And we'll buy those twelve monthly increments, average them together, and that's what the dash line at the top is. By March of twenty twenty-two, we'll be able to tell you what your twenty twenty-three price is, and that should be really to you or before you really get, you know, too far involved in your budgeting. You see the dash, little dash bars in June and December with the question marks. Those are kind of your off-ramps of, you know, do I want to have to convert to a fixed price at that point? And we'll come to you and tell you, based on the current market, this is what we think your fixed price would be and let you know if you make the decision if you want to off-ramp or not. That's just kind of mechanically how it looks on a timeline. Next slide. So on the options for, just to recap, you know, we see a positive energy future, good pricing, lots of supply. That's true in ERCOT. It's true nationwide. And we think that's what makes this program work. If we felt like prices were gonna be going up, we wouldn't be offering or even recommending that you think about this. But we're seeing a very stable market. We see signs that pricing in the energy market can be going down, and we think it's better to buy a little shorter right now and take advantage of those better price breaks that will come along as they develop. If they don't, we'll convert to a fixed price and try to, you know, get that done before we see any major things happen. SHP is structured to buy when the price is the most advantageous. It can be all renewable if you want it to be, and it's very flexible. Allows you to convert to a fixed price at any time you want. If that's not what you want, then as Margaret mentioned, we still have the fixed contract, fixed price contract option, and we'll come back to you in the spring of twenty twenty-one with, you know, what we think pricing would be and what we see in the market to discuss getting that done sometime in the spring of next year. So that's it to try to give you a recap of what SHP looks like. Again, it's not real rocket science. It's just a little bit different than what we've done in the past, but it's trying to take advantage of what we're seeing in the market. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Mesmer has a couple of questions. So the charts you presented looks like a contango, right?
Yes.
Okay, and is there ever backwardation? Have you ever seen?
There has been, yes.
But currently, we're in a contango market.
We actually had a short-term backwardation in two thousand eighteen when all the coal plants went offline, but it was a very short-term phenomenon. It went back to backwardation, I mean, back to contango real quick, so. So, yes, we have seen it, but the current outlook for the future market that ERCOT's showing is that we're gonna have excess generation reserves, far in excess of what ERCOT or the Public Ability Commission likes to see for the next five years forward. So it's looking real positive, and that should, with that very, very, you know, strong supply position, should keep the contango.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand. So the short-term contract, you will price it from time to time in the, in the futures market to lock in a certain price? Is that correct?
We're basically, it's a little more disciplined than that. We're going to go out at a set time every month, which typically, when you look at the market, there are very, on a weekly basis, there's some really good opportunities that are pretty consistent in the month, and we're gonna choose those best times to price. And we're gonna go to the market and ask for bid prices on those days. If we see that market has a blowout that day and we come back with prices that don't look like what we would expect normally see, we will reject those bids and try again. But we're trying to do this under a very disciplined purchase approach. It's not a haphazard, oh, we're just gonna be out there every day willy-nilly buying, you know, a little here and a little there.
Okay, so then should, should backwardation set in for longer than a six-month period when coal plants go offline? Then how do you contact us and say, you know, we think you should lock in for X years?
We would, that's a good question. Probably just either by phone or by email. I would.
Okay, so you would push that to Harlingen with that information?
Yes, we can push that out.
Okay.
And I don't think we're gonna, you know, we're monitoring the market in a lot of ways every day, more than just looking at that future curve, although it's important. And you can kind of spin based on what you see in the market dynamic. Who's coming in to build and who's, you know, what you like on the market. You can see, well, sometimes before you start seeing the pricing impacts of them, so.
Mike, Mike, this is Richard. Can you please explain to me what backwardization is?
Okay, contango is where you're, you're, you have a current price and your future, your future price there step higher, generally speaking. And backwardation is when your nearest contract, your nearest month is higher than the future months going out. And futures markets are quite dynamic, and that's, that's understating it. I mean, they change by the nanosecond.
And that's more of a trading?
I'd say yeah, the futures market that you see the backwardation or the contango. But when I talk about prices going down in the future, I'm talking a very long-term trend in the market because we're seeing more and more there's a ton dollar in being built in there, a whole bunch of planning.
Sir, may I ask, what, what is the fixed price today? I mean, I know we're not presenting that, but, but if it was, if you were to present that today, what is the fixed price at?
The fixed price is, well, I don't have a price today. Prices change every day, but based
What was it yesterday?
Based on the analysis I showed you, those numbers were running on a fixed price about three point four cents, somewhere in that range.
So the fixed price right now is at three point four, and our contract right now currently is three point eight?
Yeah. Yeah, you should be able to get somewhere around that, maybe lower on some days, a little higher on others, but that's about three, 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 four, four, five.
And, and, and going through a variable, I don't know how, how much would it more improve to the three point, to the three point four?
What I'm seeing on the variable that we're looking at on average, what we've seen is the prices are about a quarter of a cent cheaper. About, you know, if you're looking at three point three, it may be three point
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you're looking at a three point three, take about point two five cents off of that, so maybe about three point one, somewhere in that range. That's what we've seen on average is the discount to go with the return contract. It's about a quarter of a cent.
And is it not, is it not correct that on a fixed rate, if we extend the contract a little longer, do like a five-year instead of a short term, and we lock in for, you know, five years at three point and we lock in for, you know, five years at three point four, uh, the 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 rate gets a little bit better because it's a longer term, correct?
Uh, not necessarily. That that's not necessarily true. We saw the last time that we bought a five year contract, we had some members that left TCAP as they were told to go out and buy a seven to nine year contract. And they and and we're we're current, you're currently at about three point eight, they were over four cents easily. And so now they're locked into an even higher price contract for a longer period of time.
I don't know, but my but my question was is, when you have options, uh, two year, three year, four year, five year, typically doesn't, when you're not getting into a longer term, you get a little bit better rate on a fixed term?
No, that I'm saying exactly the opposite.
And so Bill, you had a slide that you showed earlier that that explained that an aspect of of long fixed pricing. And what I I gathered from that was that uh when the 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 vendors, uh, the providers of the electricity, sort of, they build in a uh a a higher price in the out in the out years because you're mitigating their risk. So I miss, so I misunderstood, I think I misunderstood what we were, what was being presented at the last meeting. I thought we were locking, we were we were really locking in for a five year rate, which I didn't think was advantageous because I anticipate that uh prices will continue to be low, is which is what you're saying uh in your presentation and that and and this allows us not to this is like aver, this is like averaging in, you know, when you invest in the stock market. You try not to put all your money in all at the same time because then, I might, because then, you know, you know, you know, you can't you can't time that market either, so you want to lead your money in over a period of time to take advantage of of uh uh of just the different averages. So I understand it a lot better than I did just the presentation and the label that we had on on that. I didn't think, I I don't think really explained it very well. And Margaret kind of cleared it up toward the end of the discussion, but at the last, uh, and the light started to come on in in my mind at the end of the meeting. But I I appreciate the presentation that you made because I understand what we're, what you're what you're proposing to us a lot better today than I did two weeks ago.
If I may follow up, uh, this is a superior presentation. And the question we had a few weeks ago was, if we go short term, can anything blow up? I know, I know there's never zero risk in a marketplace. But the underlying feeling was, can we blow things up? And the way you presented it today, doing the shorter uh contract, uh, things tend, it's a very, very low risk of blowing things up.
You're you're they're minimizing the risk.
And uh, did you get that question answered about the contract that I had that about penalties about terminating early and the language that's presenting in our packet? That shows twenty thirty seven and and the penalty, uh, what we would have to pay. I don't know if any of y'all got to read the contract. Uh, did you get that that answered?
So I did ask Margaret, Margaret, maybe you can chime in again. So the question was uh, under section one four, talks about you can terminate and get out of the contract. But then in section one five, it talks about penalties for getting out of the contract. And and Mark, Mark was able to explain that a little bit better. So Margaret, if you don't mind?
No, I don't mind. Thank you. So um, just to kind of give you um, under a fit, under your current five year contract, um, you have penalties written into it. The idea is that the energy company has to buy the energy and and basically sit on it till you pay them for it. And so if for some reason the city of Harlingen just said today, hey, we're out, we're walking away, we signed a different contract, you would require to pay penalties for the power that was already purchased for you under this contract. Um, like I said earlier, when we started, we had three members that have told us that they're going um somewhere else um in twenty twenty three. They're just going to sit there, write out the contract, and then new contract with wherever they're going is going to start in twenty twenty three. So there's always penalties on track. The S H P, because it's different, um, yes, the the twenty thirty seven date is a little kind of a, you know, little, oh, my gosh, what are we doing? The idea is that um, you know, we plan on doing this for about five years. You know, we always come back to our cities, you know, four, five year timeframe to tell you this is what's going on. This is what we're thinking we're going to do moving forward. The idea was, if we continue, if everyone says, yes, we want to continue, we'll still be able to do it under this contract instead of everybody having to jump through hoops to try and pass another agreement and contract and and that sort of thing. So that date is not to exceed twenty thirty seven. But we're only buying those one year contracts at a time. You actually um can get out of TCAP and, you know, a the S H P a lot easier than you can a five year contract. Because they're only buying that one year. So if you, if if you come to us and say, out, we we're going to go somewhere else TCAP, it's been great, but we're out. All you have to do is kind of is just sit through whatever it is. We would tell you, okay, well, we've purchased power for you through X date. If you just sat there, took that power, there aren't the penalties um for those five years. It's when you just, I'm out of here and you walk away from the contract that the penalties um get in.
What, can you tell me what the penalties are in dollars or percentage?
We can't, because what happens is, and and I'll let Bill jump in if I if I don't get this wrong, right? What happens is is that um they buy the power. So let's say they buy the power at three point two cents for you for a year. Um, then you, you know, uh, walk out of the contract. Whatever power is left, they have to sell back into the market. So if they sell it back into the market at three point one five, you're on the hook for that point oh five cent difference for the number of kilowatts. If they sell it into the market at three point five cents, um, Bill, my understanding is they'll share the the profit or?
No, they, you actually get the profit. So if that's the difference, so there's there's about two or three small fees. There's a fee for JEXA because they are amortizing their cost to be your billing over the course of five years. Early, they got to recover those costs because they amortize them over the length of the contract. That's why they're low. And TCAP has the same situation. As far as the energy, those are very minor. As far as the energy cost, it's mark to market, is what they call it. It means, as Margaret said, you, there's a difference between what the market price is and what your contract price is. The market price is higher than your contract price, this contract will have that money come back to you. And that's probably what you contract market that will do that. If if they have to fill it at a price lower, you have to pay that difference. And that's going to be in any contract that you sign in the market.
Dan, can I ask, uh, has, this may be a uh not a, has the legal department looked at at the contract?
Allison's on the screen, I can have her answer that.
Uh, we did look at it. Um, there may be, I I would have to go over and see if any of the changes we made were were in fact implemented. But we we did look at it, yes.
So you did, you you looked at it, you made recommendations to change some items?
I'm not sure. I think uh another attorney in our firm may have looked at it, so I would have to check and
I think they wanted the venue changed from whatever time it was to Cameron County.
Yeah, because this doesn't, this doesn't look like something that we would have approved. So I would have to go into our system and see um what those changes were.
So so Margaret, so the S S H P program, that allows you to buy the the power for a period of time that if we write out, it's a more shorter period of time, and if we want to get out, we can. As opposed to a five year deal, which means we have to write it out for five years.
Yes.
And there's nothing to prevent us from jumping off and going to a fixed price if if it's to our advantage.
Yes, absolutely.
So there's no penalty on 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 doing uh with the variable?
Um, if you um, no, the, well, there is, um, I'm sorry.
You just said it was like a point, uh, there was like a difference in the end of in the five year.
Uh, so so, Commissioner, are are we asking if uh, is there a penalty to go from a the S H P to a fixed price?
No, no, no.
No, no, what I asked is is if we if we decide to leave the contract and 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 we're doing, uh, we do the variable, and let's say it's a three year and we're in year two. Uh, and and we write out year two, but they still year three pending. Well, they they secured the 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 the, we understood that they secured the energy for that year three. And whatever difference that is, when they go back to sell it, we we're responsible for.
Yes.
All right, so I I I would, uh, and I I appreciate the presentation. I would really feel comfortable, uh, one, uh, whatever the commission decides to do as far as of the the length of the contract or how they want to set it up. But I would feel much more comfortable if if our legal team could look at it and bless the contract. Uh, because I found it pretty complicated uh to go through, uh, and I'm not an attorney either, but but I would like for them to 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 give their blessings and 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 recommendations uh before we have Dan sign the contract.
Gabriel, can you take the slide back to the word? It says S H P timeline of future events for twenty twenty three start?
Yes, actually. That was the
Go back about three slides from there. Okay, go forward. Because I think this was like an eight slide and it's a me slide, like number five.
It's, I think slide eleven, sir.
Eleven, okay. Nope, nope, nope.
Keep going forward. One more, two more.
Right there, right there. Okay, so just, just so my mind, because I I hear what Commissioner would even is saying, but I I want to make sure that I have it right. So according to this chart that you have, and yours jumped and mine jumped, so you, can you go back to that slide?
Go back one second, yo.
One slide.
Okay, so right now, today, we're in twenty twenty. And we're going to be signing a contract for twenty twenty two, is that correct?
Twenty three.
Twenty three, and you're going to purchase the twenty three energy during twenty twenty one?
Yes.
Okay, so we're in twenty twenty three, we're rocking along, we're on the S H P. And all of a sudden, we decide in July, we don't like the program. So based on this chart, we've pre-purchased through twenty twenty five? Bill?
In twenty, it's, let's pick January of twenty twenty three, okay?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at because of the budget. June and July, we're doing budget. And we've decided in twenty twenty three, we've decided because of the budget, we're going to we we had our workshop and said, let's get out of this thing.
Hmm.
So in twenty twenty three, we announce, we're we're done. We're on the hook until twenty twenty five, mid time, mid mid twenty twenty five?
Yes, it's, look at it on average, you're going to be eighteen months ahead in the market, so you'll have to buy out eighteen months. We'll have an eighteen month on average procurement ahead of time versus a five year under a fixed price contract.
And that's what my point is. If if I bought a five year from you guys, I'm on the hook for all five years.
Yes.
I'm on, if I do this with you guys, we're on the hook for about eighteen months, okay? Which is a shorter period of time to to figure out what we're going to do. And 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 we already know all that number. I mean, we we know it because we've committed to it. And at that point, y'all can tell the energy provider, and so all we have to do is sit. Right?
But but
Without penalty, but without penalty.
The the problem I had with that was, is when it does, right now, the prices are great, but it's gonna, eventually, it's going to go up, right? And what I wanted to avoid is, for me, the longer the contract, uh, you have the exact opposite. We we it's a very manageable number right now. The savings don't really uh justify the change, in my opinion. Uh, as opposed to, okay, hey, there's going to be a spike in the market. And uh, we can, we can take advantage of, hey, we have an extra couple of years to to absorb and maintain our current price and budget. Uh, as opposed to in this one, if it goes up a cent, I remember I asked the question, how much is a cent worth? And it's a quarter of a million dollars in in difference in price off one cent variation.
Well, I know.
So that, that's what made me uncomfortable. So again, I, you know, I I respect whatever you all, you thought, whatever you all want to decide as a as a group. I just really, really at this point concerned with the contract and what we're actually agreeing to and making sure that our legal department understands, uh, you know, the whole, the whole idea of them.
Yeah, I agree with you. And I think, I think our contract, if we decide to go with a fixed contract, we're on the hook for five years. And that's my concern. Can you go back one more slide, Sergio?
Yeah, but but
Hold on, let me, let me finish real quick. So the green line, again, I I all I'm doing is absorb, absorbing what y'all just told us. I want to make sure that I'm verbalizing it to understand this. Because when we look at these numbers, we're talking tenths of a cent, right? Because you said point zero one two five or point zero zero two five, I mean, it's a fraction of a penny. So when I'm looking at this chart, the green bar represent a five year contract, is that not correct?
That's your correct.
Okay, and 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 the red blocks below would be those S H P numbers. And so that fraction of a penny on twenty twenty represents the savings of sixty four K had we been on the S H P, is that not correct?
Correct.
And so my concern, and I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner, I would ask the same question. Why does it say twenty thirty eight? But my understanding from what they've explained to me, this is really an eighteen month contract that we're buying. Because once we opt out, we just got to hold on for an eighteen month period rather than holding on for a three year period, because second year into the fixed contract at point three eight eight, we're not happy with it. We got to stay on until it's done.
Yeah, but but my my point was, again, if the market goes up to uh four point five, which is common, right? Because if you look historically, maybe the last five years or prior, and 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 I, you know, I wish we would have had that since two thousand eleven when we joined this group. What were the, what were the real, the actual realized savings of what 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 have occurred since we we've joined this co-op? But having said that, if it goes up one or two cents, if we have a fit, then that wasn't the thing about a fixed term, like almost like a mortgage. Well, we're all paid because we've been budgeting and we can't afford to take such a drastic jump. As opposed to the benefit of this one is, we're going to save, you know, maybe sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year. And remember, um, some of that realized savings is not all of the city. It also deals with uh Harlingen Water Works.
Right, but remember, if you look at this chart here, this is five years at a high of three seventy two and a low of three fifty seven. And and so for me, I I have a real hard time hearing that we're going to jump a whole penny. I can understand we're going to jump a quarter of a penny, but a whole penny now. You know, I mean, I I, you know, I'm sitting here looking at this and I'm going, okay, so if it's going to jump, we're going to know it's going to jump long in advance because they're buying it two years out. So we're going to know two years out that we're going to have a jump. And at that point, we say, you know what? Set us up with a fixed rate and we we lock it in at that point in time when it's at that point.
Hey, and and those are all good, great points. I just, I just want to make sure that that uh we have legal of the contract.
I know, I know, I know.
It's, it's like, may I sum things up, Mayor?
Well, let me just, let me just say what I was going to say and then, oh, you know, uh, we we can approve, we can approve the resolution and the agreement subject to a final legal review by counsel.
That would be great.
They have something that they're concerned, where they can bring it back to us. If they feel like they're comfortable with it, then uh we don't, we wouldn't need to bring it back. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, you know, Richard, you mentioned what what happens if it jumps up a penny. That would be like a twenty five to thirty five percent increase in electricity costs. And that would happen all across the country. And I can't see energy prices going up thirty, twenty five, thirty five percent in the next many years. There's, there's nothing to drive the cost of electricity up. Electricity production gets more efficient as we speak. And he's dealing in eighteen month contracts. And should, should the electric rates start creeping up? They can't jump up overnight, you would cause a global depression. Uh, should they start creeping up, then we could lock into a longer time period. We have that freedom. So this is, in my opinion, the far better way to go.
Well, it 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 with 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 COVID going on, not knowing uh what's what's in the future, with our election just, you know, finishing Well, it 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 with 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 COVID going on, not knowing uh what's what's in the future, with our election just, you know, finishing up. We we don't, we don't, we really don't know, right? And and it it could go one way or the other and and and.
The the trend of electricity has been down for thirteen years. And there's nothing in the futures contract, there's nothing in the price of oil or natural gas. To tell me it's going to shoot up twenty thirty five percent.
Mayor, can I go ahead?
I hope you're right, I hope you're right.
Resolution uh with with the understanding that that uh legal will come back and and give us their. Their opinion.
Their their blessing.
Yes, can we go ahead with the the amendment or the or your suggestion, Mayor, can we go ahead and move forward with that?
My suggestion was that we go ahead and approve the resolution and the agreement subject to a final legal legal review. And if if they find something, they won't bring it back to us, and they'll bring it back before before I execute. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, very good. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The item five, which is a consideration of possible action of proven ordinance on first reading. It designated a no parking zone along the east side of M Street, south of Buchanan Avenue, through the first driveway for approximately a hundred and twenty feet.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and and council members. Uh, this request was presented to us as a safety concern for vehicles traveling westbound on Buchanan Avenue. Uh, we verified the concern with an onsite inspection of the area and determined there is a need for a greater line of sight uh visibility for vehicles. Stopped at the east side of Buchanan uh getting onto M Street. The proposed no parking zone will extend approximately a hundred and twenty feet on the east side of M Street from Buchanan Avenue. Uh, south to the first driveway there of the church. Um, I've got a uh a schematic here uh that that shows. You know, where 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 we're talking about, um, as you're, as you're approaching M Street from Buchanan. There's, there's a two-way traffic there and uh a lot of northbound traffic from Lincoln uh is coming. And and when cars are parked along here, it it's just pretty hard to see um people coming. So um, we are proposing the 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 no parking zone to extend uh to the first driveway. Of Our Lady of the Assumption Church here. Uh, so so that is, that is what we're recommending.
All right, and we ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance to establish a no parking zone on the east side of M Street, beginning at the intersection of Buchanan Avenue. Extending south to Lincoln Avenue for a distance of approximately one hundred and twenty linear feet in length. For the no parking zone, authorizing the towing of vehicles parked in said no parking zone. Establishing a penalty not to exceed two hundred dollars per violation of the provisions of this ordinance. Providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
This this, and this is gonna be including Sundays, correct? Because they do have church on Sunday there.
Uh, correct, Commissioner, uh, this this would be a full-time no parking zone, so uh we we did reach out to a. A pastor uh there at the Our Lady of the Assumption and and he, he uh, he was in favor of this. Um, uh, this proposed no parking zone.
Mr. Vixto, can I ask a a question? Is there any way, if you look at that photograph? When they do that striping, is there any way that we can touch up across the street so it's very clear? Uh, you see how it goes yellow then to red uh across the street? Um, can 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 our, can our department just touch that up so it's very visible?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Did we ever get a second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I, six rather, is consideration possible action to accept or reject bids. For the Buchanan Avenue sidewalk improvement projects under bid number twenty twenty dash thirteen.
Uh, yes, uh, so this project has has uh come before you uh previously. And uh, last time we met, we were, we were asking to uh negotiate with the uh. The contractor on this. Um, we have since uh circled back with the uh, the folks at HUD. And we we feel it's in the city's best interest to go ahead and reject all bids and re-rebid this project.
I'm also for approval, man.
Reject all bids?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries the uh to reject the bids. Item seven, consideration possible action to appoint a representative to the hotel operating committee. In accordance to the cooperation development agreement with Prominent Group, Harlingen Properties LLC for the City of Harlingen Convention Center Hotel.
Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, the uh, the Prominent Group, uh, Harlingen Properties is the owner. Is the entity that owns, operates and constructed the hotel. The agreement that's in place with the city, uh, uh, the city has agreed or provides. For the city to nominate an appointment, an appointee to the uh operating committee. Uh, at this time, staff is recommending Gabe Gonzalez to be appointed to uh this uh committee. And uh.
Does he know that?
He 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 just, he just found out, sir. Yeah, Gabe, Gabe is over our C V B department, so I thought it'd be a natural progression for him. Uh, so and this is in accordance with the agreement that we executed for construction of the hotel. And I I think Gabe will serve the city well.
Motion for an approval, sir.
And we have a second from Commissioner uh Donna Rosa. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign, congratulations, Gabe. Unanimously to the.
Thank you, Mayor.
Out of eight board appointments, does anybody have any board appointments to go?
I I I had a Jack Froggen to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
And I have a a reappointment, uh, John Givada to the Harlingen Community, Harlingen Community Improvement Board.
Any other? Or have heard the board appointments?
Motion for approval?
Is there a second? We have a second, Commissioner Pointe, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Are being no other items on our agenda this evening. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Have a safe and evening and everybody be safe out there. Thank, thank you all. Good night.
Good night, Mayor.
Night.